I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners meeting in order. It's Monday, August 21st, 2017. It is now 9:01. I provide a police stamp for the pledge.
The pledge is to be the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, could you call the real place?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Right.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
We'll move down to table of business. I believe we're going to go ahead and keep the agreement for collections in here. Move down to resolution number 2017-034. Resolution of Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Indiana, making the final determination of the tax sales certificate to be assigned for a nonprofit corporation. I'd entertain a motion to take that off the table.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion a second to take that off the table. Then I'd entertain a motion to go ahead and pass this resolution.
This is the 4221 East Jackson Street property. This will frankly, I would ask you to keep it on the table because we're still investigating this one.
Okay. Make a motion, entertain a motion, put it back on the table.
So moved.
Second.
Steve, can you call the real place?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next will be resolution number 2017-035, resolution of Board of Commissioners of the County of Delaware transferring property deed in Board of Commissioners' name to the City of the Muncie Redevelopment Commission. Entertain a motion to remove this one from the...
Yeah, we, I don't have any problem with this one.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion a second. Can we get a motion to go ahead and approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have motion a second. Do you have anything, Zane, before we vote on it?
Uh, no, unless you have any other questions. No. Great.
Steve, can you call the real place?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next we have the ordinance number 2017-017A, ordinance amending section 181 of the Delaware County Code of Ordinance. John?
This was the, on the recorder's copying fees. I believe that Ms. Marshall has seen this and approves this one now, my understanding.
I think so, because all of the things that I marked out, I think you made the necessary changes.
Yeah. Entertain a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
Second. Have motion a second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, approval of minutes for August 7th, 2017.
So moved.
Well, second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Who won the presentation is two commissioners, Gov. Deals, Andrew.
Good morning. Yep. All right. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. How long do I have?
I can't.
Okay. Um, gonna talk a little bit about Gov. Deals. Basically what Gov. Deals is, is an online auction site for government, kind of like eBay, but specific for municipal sellers. We are our largest online auction company in the country, started in the year 2000, 1999, so been doing it for almost 17 years. Just recently surpassed $1 billion of sales on our site. Work with over 11,000 public agencies across the country, including a ton of them here in Indiana as well as the state. As far as how it works, the best part about this, there's no cost to the county. It doesn't cost the county any money to sell with us. The way that it works is the winning bidder on each auction pays a premium on top of their bid price. That's either seven and a half or 12 and a half percent depending on how the county decides to collect payment. Most agencies choose to have us collect payment. That way we process all the payment with the methods you see here, all major credit cards, PayPal, anything over $5,000 requires a bank wire. We collect the entire amount of money, whatever the auction sold for is the check that the county gets, and then the winning bidder just pays that premium on top of the cost. Only government agencies can sell, but anybody can go on the site and buy. So it's a great way for the county to sell surplus, anything that they would have from vehicles to equipment, to furniture, to electronics, to the general public, or even in some cases to other government agencies who could use it. Selling online is our only business. Selling online is specifically proven to bring significantly higher returns than local auctions, sealed bids, trade-ins, and some of the traditional methods governments have used to get rid of old surplus assets. We are approved by the State of Indiana as an online auction service for the disposal of surplus. We also have a dedicated client service rep who will be helping the county to get their stuff listed, do the trainings, really kind of to just hold a handout, each guest started with it if he decided to. Really, the majority of surplus for most government agencies comes from vehicles and equipment, usually about 80%. And we did about $240 million of sales last year. About 200 million of that were in vehicles and heavy equipment, but we also did just under $40 million of everything else. So that's furniture, electronics, really anything that that would be sold can be sold on the site as long as your municipality. Nothing's too big, nothing's too small. This is an example, the State of Utah, within a couple of days of each other, they sold this helicopter for almost $900,000 and this wooden chair for six, or wooden desk for $6. So nothing's too big, nothing's too small. Here's some examples of stuff that sold here in Indiana. Hamilton County sold a bunch of stuff with us, including some of their snow piles, fire trucks, lawnmowers. Like I said, obviously the fact that we only work with municipalities, most cities, counties, states have the same type of surplus to sell. And then small stuff, City of Indianapolis is a big client of ours. They sold some old LCD computer monitors with us for $42. Ball State University is one of our largest clients in the state, so that's a huge benefit to the county. We already have a huge bidder base here, and they sell everything from, you know, furniture to computers to vehicles. Indiana University is another big agency of ours, and you can see they sold these three TVs. They got more than a dollar a piece for these TVs, and anybody who knows about electronics knows that most people throw these away. So with all auctions, the winning bidder is responsible to come and pick the assets up after they've made payments. So if it's a vehicle or smaller lotted stuff like this, the winning bidder is always going to have to come where the county specifies and pick the assets up after the payments have been made. So it works good enough, you guys eliminate the stuff that's been sitting around in warehouses, turn the stuff over more frequently, and then obviously make more money in doing so. Here's a brief list of some of the agencies that are using us. Like I said, a ton of counties throughout the state, a lot of the higher eds as well, Ball State University. You can actually go on the website, you can see a full list and what type of auctions they have. You can go and do a search for up to a year and see all the results of everything any agency sold. Because it's designed for government, it's completely transparent, and helps everybody to kind of be able to see what's being sold. As far as bidders, like I said, you guys are in a great situation here. Ohio is our strongest state, so you're going to get a ton of bidders from there, and then just in this area specifically, within 500 miles of Indianapolis, we have almost 285,000 active registered bidders. And zooming in a little bit, within 250 miles, we have almost 73,000 active registered bidders. So if you put stuff up online, you're not going to have any problems getting bids, it's going to get more than you used to getting and having people come and get in the stuff out of your hair. Marketing, as I said, the way that our pricing structure works, if your stuff doesn't sell, we make no money. So we dedicate a huge amount of time and money into marketing. So not only does the stuff go on our site, also we put it out on other internet sites like Car Daddy, Auto Trader, Rock and Dirt Magazine, depending on what it is, firetrader.com, anywhere we can get more visibility, and then we direct those people to your auctions. This has proven to help you get a lot more bids and a lot more money. Would also encourage you to put something on your website, maybe do something in the local paper so people know that this is an easier way for them to buy surplus from the county. As I mentioned, reporting is key. Our auditrail, our transparency, our reporting features are second to none. You're going to have more data than you would ever need, but of course that is important for a government agency, and that's kind of why this was modeled after eBay, but specific for government with the reporting and transparency that's required. Real quick, I'll take you onto the site so you can kind of see what it looks like. Unfortunately, the display here kind of is cutting some of it off, but this is the main page. Down here, a list of categories. You can see categories for everything that is currently being sold. There's everything from automobiles, ambulances, to fine art, garbage, health course equipment, books. I mean, you name it, we've sold it. And then if you go in and look at some of the auctions, this is, the City of Indianapolis currently has this auction up. There's 12 hours left on the auction. You can see the buyer's premium is 12 and a half percent, so whatever the bidder puts in as their bid price, they're paying 12 and a half percent on top of that. And then the county is, again, as I said, getting the full amount of the bid. Right now, there's one bid on it for $70, and the next bid would be $95. And you can see there's been 85 visitors. This is actually just the bottom part of a treadmill, so it's not even operational, and somebody's already bid $70. So to me, that's something that would maybe go in the garbage, but somebody's going to pay $70 to come and get this out of their hair, as well as any of the other stuff they have sitting around. Another good example here is the Ball State University, as I said. They're selling the Wheelbarrow right now. This auction ends in six hours. That actually looks like a pretty nice one.
Yeah.
This auction ends in six hours, same deal, they're passing it to the end of the winning bidder. They've already got 17 bids on this, unbelievably, and they've already got $31 right now. And obviously, most of the bidding happens in the last hour, the last 10 minutes, the last couple, couple seconds. So I expect this to go for more, but again, this is something that the winning bidder's going to come and pick up. The university's going to get a nice check, and the winning bidder's going to come and get it out of their hair. So the very last thing I'll show you is kind of just how easy it is to get an account set up. So like I said, there's no cost, there's no contract required, it's non-exclusive. Just about every agency that uses us now started off with this pilot, kind of saying, hey, really nothing to lose, let's try one or two or 10 assets, and you know, see, see how the system works, see how the results work, and you're out nothing by doing that. And I can guarantee you're going to have a really good experience with it. As far as setting up the account, just put in the basic information. We obviously verify that you are a qualifying municipal agency. You choose how you want to be paid. We can pay you electronically or with a paper check in the mail. And then you choose what you want to do with your fees. Like I said, I would recommend you pass the fee on to the winning bidder, make it a free for the county. Click submit, and you're all set to go. We dedicate a local rep, William, to come out and help get you trained how to use the system, get as many users set up as you would like, and hold your hand to make this a really easy process for the county and give it a try and get started. So that's all I have, unless anybody has questions. I did leave some cards and flyers up front here, so anybody who wants to grab those can do so. Otherwise, there's a great amount of information on the website as well.
Andrew, I appreciate you coming back, and I was real impressed when you did your presentation.
Thanks.
And since Ball State's doing that, and I think the city schools also are doing.
Yep.
And you did suggest most people have like Friday afternoon from like 12 to 4 for a pickup.
Yeah, you can set your own pickup hours or by appointment only.
Right. And one of my concerns is that the monies that came back, come back, that we will have to have them in a certain fund, so on the application, when someone becomes a seller, they can't put the sheriff department, but if it's from a grant, they could.
Yeah, you can actually set up what's called departmental billing, so you can set up as many different departments, and you can get checks for each of them to keep all that individual.
Right.
And then also with our reporting features, you could go in and say, I just want to see sales from the sheriff's department, or I just want to see what's been done with the highway department. And everybody's still listed under that same account, but they're all departmentalized, and the payments are going elsewhere. And they're kind of multiple accounts within the same account, but you can break up where the money goes, or it gets set up where it all just goes into one general fund.
And if Mr., I'll let William talk to Mr. Craycraft, our auditor, on how, once the money's sent, but just as long as it's got good clarification on where the money goes. Now, you did mention that you could, you can sell firearms.
Yep. Yeah, what we do, it's called a restricted bid, so obviously we work with a ton of sheriffs and police departments. You set up a restricted bid in that everybody can see the auction, but in order to go in and actually bid on that auction, bidder has to qualify. They have to send us or send the county either proof that they're another law enforcement agency, or that they have an FFL, basically that they're qualified to bid on, own and possess those. So it kind of weeds out and restricts certain people to have to get unlocked to go and bid it, but we sell tons of firearms all over the country, and you know, obviously a great way to make, make money doing so, and above board as well.
John, I had a question. Does this mean that we should have to change any of our policy, that we would like the departments to start using this?
I'd have to take a look at that. You probably would declare the, should declare the property surplus, and then have it transferred over to that. I think the county is the purchasing agent, the commissioners are the purchasing agent for the county.
And like he said, there's hardly anything too small. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I've seen a pile of dirt sold that was sitting on a public works lot, that they said, hey, we'll give it away, but somebody paid $5. And then more importantly, somebody had to take trucks in and out and get that whole pile of bill dirt out of there. So it can be used as a great removal tool, but obviously also really great to help you make a lot more money for the stuff of valuable vehicles, electronics, stuff that right now is not getting a good return, is basically just sitting around depreciating, and it's going to help the county get more surplus revenue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again.
Yeah.
Trevor, would you like for John to look into this and...
Yeah, John, do you want to...
Sure, I'd be happy to.
...ask him questions, some of the people using it. I think it has great potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five, a report for next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Zane Bisha, Muncie Redevelopment Commission. Just want to provide the commissioners with a brief update on the Hardset Fund Program. To date, we've spent nearly a million dollars on the program, demolishing houses and getting them cleaned up, cleaning, removing all the debris, any brush, anything that may deteriorate surrounding property values. We've currently demolished 87 properties, and within the next couple of weeks, we can expect to demolish half the properties in the Hardset Fund Program. As a reminder, 208 properties were funded for the Hardset Fund Program for demolition. Looking to the future, and we will be transferring the properties to taxpaying purposes, so that private individuals and companies will take on these properties, improve them. About half the properties, we estimate, we transfer to just adjacent property owners who have seen these properties sit there for, for five or more years typically. So this will just be an opportunity for them to expand their side yard, and just almost as a reward for living next to these blighted properties. And also about another half of the properties, we estimate, will be transferred for new construction, whether that be through a private developer, or a nonprofit agency in town, Habitat, or Muncie Home Ownership and Realization. So that those will, I'll be getting a lot more property taxes paid on them than, than what have been when they've been sitting vacant and no one's been paying the property taxes on, especially with the, with the new construction, a new house on the property. That'll dramatically increase the assessed value current, from currently. And the commissioners and the county can also expect an increase of total property value. It's estimated that properties within 150 feet of a blighted property such as these are 50% lower in their property value than what they could be without the blight being there. So the county can also expect a higher property tax income after the removal of these properties and after the City of Muncie, with the State of Indiana and the US Treasury Department have invested money in these houses. Also want to provide an update, another program we're working on for vacant, invited, blighted houses and lots. The Neighbor Investment Committee, as an agent of the Muncie Redevelopment Commission, is currently working a small program to take on bided properties and lots. We've, we've had some progress. We've been able to sell a couple, a couple of our properties to people, first time homeowners who are currently renovating the properties themselves, and then will be occupying them. We've also just transferred a property near Mad Jacks for renovation to, into five high, high-quality rental units, which will be a dramatic increase to the Madison Street corridor in the downtown area. And then looking toward the future, we, this Muncie City Council passed an ordinance to establish the Muncie Land Bank, which is a, will be a nonprofit organization with the Board of Directors comprising of appointees by the mayor, city council, and the county treasurer. So this will be kind of hoping to expand in the Neighbor Investment Committee programs and take a, a huge tackle at blighted properties within the City of Muncie. And the commissioners can be expected to be contacted by the interim board president to talk more about this organization and, and future partnerships. Does the commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, it sounds like you've been very busy.
Yes, we have been.
Appreciate you being a good help.
Yeah, we appreciate your partnership. We would not have been able to have this progress without the assignment of tax sales certificates.
Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements for approval. We have an agreement for preliminary engineering report preparation service from BS Engineering. Brad?
Commissioners, good morning. Blackout Delaware County Economic Development. Before you is a proposal from BS Engineering to complete professional services relating to the preliminary engineering reports, looking at wastewater and drinking water facilities, and also sewer and water service in the area of I-69, State Route 28, Gaston. We know that Westdale School Corporation in particular might have water and sewer service at some point. We have established a TIF district in the area. That is ongoing now. There is not immediate funds to complete the water and wastewater installations, but we hope in the future, maybe someday there might be, and there may be the need for an end user for those. So Kenny Burke from BS Engineering is here to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I, what kind of timeline are we looking at? Have one, where we might hear something or see something?
To complete this report?
Yeah, yeah.
From beginning to end, right around 200 and some days. Now, that can be abridged a little bit, but depends on review of agencies, et cetera, et cetera. But we're looking around the course of the year.
And you'll have to get started as soon as possible?
I think our kickoff date is 15 days after notice to proceed in, in the contract.
Sounds good.
Motion a second.
I make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proposal for information technology assessment service from American Structure Point.
I've had an opportunity to take a look at this proposal, and I don't see anything objectionable in the proposal and general conditions that were set forth by American Structure Point, so I'll leave it up to the commissioners to decide as to how they wish to proceed.
Something we probably should have done years ago.
I agree with you, and I'll make a motion to approve the Structure Point contract.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance for first reading, ordinance number 2017-019, Delaware County Commissioners reestablishing the CASA Donation Fund.
This is the Guardian and Lightroom CASA, CASA Fund. This is a request from the CASA program. They have a, we started out with a, a different ordinance, found out that there already existed a fund that hadn't been used in a while, and so pursuant to the auditor's request, CASA has wanted to reestablish the Guardian and Lightroom GL CASA Donation Fund 4102, and this is the step in that so they can start taking donations again. There's no urgency, no reason to suspend the rules, so this would just be for introduction.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2017-019.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have resolution number 2017-033, resolution to assign tax sales certificates to the Muncie Sanitary District. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. There's four of them, three of which are Julie Behring, 3410 West Foxes, three of which are in the Whitley area, in the Floodway area, and one is over next to the Underpass, you know where those big tanks are, sometimes it floods there. That's, it's over in that area.
Having been sitting here for a while, that we appreciate you...
Thank you.
...coming and taking these properties and keeping them in grass code.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we pass resolution number 2017-033.
Second. Have a motion a second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, department heads, or any elected official, have anything for the commissioners? Everyone received their monthly report from weights and measures. As for motion for payment of claims, an amount of $1,181,170.28.
So moved.
Second. Steve, can you call the real place?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Have any comments from the public?
My name is Bill Carroll, 3600 Stonewick Lane, Muncie, Indiana, 47302. I don't have any comments about what's going on here, but I'm the founder of the Fallen Heroes Memorial Bridge Committee. And my wife and I, we stepped down about four years ago, and there's nothing been done with the committee, so I'm asking the committee to give me back the Fallen Heroes Memorial Bridge. I will get a group together, and I can promise you, there will be yearly memorial services on that bridge. You guys have the paperwork for all the survivors somewhere in Fallen Heroes Memorial Bridge files? If it's possible, I could get duplicates of anything that's in there, so that I can see what's been going on, and I just, I think we've got a beautiful thing going there, and it's, and I've heard a lot of complaints from everybody that it's not active, and we've never failed.
Jenny, do you know if we have any of, any of the files or anything?
I know that there are some things still at my desk from when Ms. Patty Lackey was a part of it, and I haven't removed any of it in fact, so you're more than welcome to stop by my desk, we can go through anything, and...
Yeah, thank you.
And I know in the past, you guys utilized our conference room for some of your meetings, so maybe we can talk about that for your future meetings.
Okay, thank you.
I told Mr. Carroll, I just would like to see a list of your committees, because we do keep them on our file.
That's why I need that file to check with them, and then I'm going out in the counties, checking with township police, volunteer firefighters, they're all on there.
And any donation does come through the treasury?
Everything, any...
I think there's about 3,000, a little bit over $3,000.
Anything that we get comes straight to you guys, and then you guys take it down to treasury or wherever. And yeah, there's $3,000. I'm going to find out if there's a cleaner that could clean those banners up.
Well, I was going to ask Angie if you'd like to have new ones, or have you checked them lately?
I have not.
And how expensive they are?
They were bought in the beginning, we bought 15, we didn't buy them, but they was bought for us, 15 of them, and they were like 1,500 bucks or something like that.
Well, we'll be glad to work with you, Mr. Carroll, and we appreciate you coming today.
And just get with our office manager, Jennifer, and she'll, she'll help you all she can.
So I'm taking it that I am back in control of Fallen Heroes?
We don't...
Well, as committees work, you know, you talk amongst yourself, and someone elected chairman...
And we don't appoint the committee, but any information that we have is, is yours.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll get her going.
And as soon as you have a date, just give us a date.
Okay, and I guarantee you won't be disappointed.
Thank you, sir.
That's it? I'll entertain a motion...
I have something real quick, James. We had some issues last week with individuals coming over from MITS and using the first floor restrooms. They're destroying the first floor bathrooms. I would like for John to write a letter to MITS asking them to either unlock their restroom facilities, or put porta-pots in or something. I don't think they're coming over here using our facilities, and it's costing us money having our people clean up after them, and they're making very large messes. So I want to try to get that resolved.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anything else? Entertain a motion recess.
So moved.
Second.
Steve, can you call the real place?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Recession. Recession.